... meeting to order, rise from the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie, roll call please.
Councilmember Groves.
I am here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here.
Motion for tonight's consent agenda as the zoning board appeals minutes as well. Just question or change for the agenda. Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Citizen discussion.
Good evening, Prairie Beach, I reside at nine twenty-four Riverside Drive. I attended Saturday the coffee with council and we had a nice discussion and they corrected me and I just thank you for that. Our discussion was about the car sales that was going on down at the fairgrounds. I attended a meeting and I thought it was a council meeting and it was a planning commission meeting and they had to apply for special use in order to have that down there. So it was some form of the city government and I just would say I was disappointed in their approving that. When you have Ziegler's, which I know is in the township, but they are local, you have Betton Baker Dodge Chrysler Jeep that made multi-million dollar investment here in the city. They were looking at possibly going out in the township, but they decided to stay in the city and then you have Betton Baker GMC and Buick is in the process of doing a multi-million dollar facility here in the city. And to, for the planning commission to approve a special use to have a nine day sale at the fairgrounds from a car dealership west Michigan that's not located here in the city, I think is disappointing. I would hope in the future that the chamber, or the council along with the planning commission would take some of those things into consideration when they make those approvals. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say that I agree with Perry. Very disappointed to see them down there. I didn't know they were coming and then things started coming in the mail with telling people they won prizes that they didn't win, so. Anybody else? Old business, engineering services for the street projects. Dan?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Our twenty-two Lowell Street approval project will be getting started here this month and we're gonna need some engineering oversight during the construction, similar to what we did with Amity and Janine Ellen and the such. Our engineers, Williams and Works, provide us with a scope of services for the work. That includes the contract documentation, a lot of construction work and staking and observation and then addressing any issues that might come up, plus the documentation of the construction activities and big item quantities and help us with all the paperwork of the project. Williams and Works indicate they can do all this work for us, including materials testing work for costs not to exceed forty-three thousand dollars. Because the work on Valley Vista Drive is within the DPA, we'll be going before them on Thursday to ask them to pay nine thousand four hundred towards the total amount and then the street funds would pay the remaining thirty-four thousand more.
Any questions for Dan? I enjoy very much that almost every meeting we come to has a street project on it or a road project on it. I really like the pace that we're moving at, so. Look for a motion then to approve the engineering with Williams and Works.
I'll make that motion.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Well, thank you. Just let you know, they gave us a, late last week, you know, two weeks ago, they gave us a timeframe, what they're looking at. They're gonna probably pull it here on July twenty-fifth and get started on the twenty-seventh. And paving, they're looking at about sometime around August eighteen. Hopefully done by the end of August, whether or not.
Where else is it? City handbook, Mike?
Yep, the city updated the employee handbook about two and a half years ago. Since this time, there's been some changes mainly due to retirement benefits. However, I had Lizzie Mills and Chad Karstens from Fakie Shells Burzick Roads review our handbook to make sure we were most compliant with our current laws. We tightened some language in the handbook also due to some incidents we had in the past. Should be noted whereby any contractual language in either the police department and DPW collective bargaining agreements differ from the handbook. The CBA takes precedence on those issues if it's a member of that bargaining unit. So I did give you a red line and a clean version of the handbook and I'm recommending the employee handbook be approved as presented.
More questions? What was, remind me, almost last time we did this?
We did it after years ago. And in twenty-nineteen.
Yeah.
So just, it was, it was time to look at it again, so we just made some tweaks to it.
Any other questions for Mike on the handbook?
I'll make a motion as soon as I have it presented.
Any other discussion?
Yep, the lines were not red. Took me a while to find.
I was trying to save money if I know color code.
Sue?
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Dan?
We get lots of calls from residents about trees in our corner street right of way that people would like to have cut down and we go out, we check them out and first determine if they are in the right of way or not and then try to take a determination as to the condition of the trees. If we can, we'll get light and power to help us cut one down if it needs to be and it's pretty obvious on most trees what needs to happen to them. We have three right now that we have, that are some concern. The residents keep calling about it because they feel they pose a hazard to their homes with falling limbs and they're concerned about trees falling. So again, we look at these and determine them that they should be removed. Locations, our eight oh five North Jefferson, which is a dead spruce tree, seven oh four Mercer, the tree's a dying maple, a lot of dead wood's falling on the house and the garage. And then two oh three South Jefferson, the trees are really on Kent Street. You have a maple there. There's three bad ones, but there's a really bad one we want to take down. Let's keep dropping limbs back. I got a whole puff in the resident today. And then there's another one there they're gonna try to trim off. Again, all these are within the right of way. Again, we've tried to get a little light and power to help us, but they just let us know they don't have the time right now to do it. So we went out for quotes from contractors. We contacted two, one contacted us back saying they were not available. The other came out and took a look at the trees, invited tree service and they wrote a quote at each location for not only tree removal, but also the stuff.
Any questions for Dan?
Is there any thought about putting a tree back in the area?
We'll look at putting a tree back in the area in accordance with the ordinance. It won't happen until fall.
Usually you can light and power save the slug.
It does.
So you've got your crew that.
Yep. But again, they, we've been having, we've been bugging them for months on these and it's like, we get it, everybody's. But again, try to get a contractor if you could do this. This kind of tough too. Fortunately, when our workers shows to me, they said they can help us.
And we have one of our employees.
Injured.
Injured. If the tree falls the wrong direction, it's gonna be a lot more.
We did have a tree fall over last night over on G Drive, locked the road. We had to come in at two in the morning and clear that out. It happens. And then if you get driving around, especially this part of town, check the trees as you're driving by, there's a lot of old trees that are at the end of their life cycles. So hopefully seeing this more and more, but if you get some planning back in the area, hopefully get things turned over again. So I think Kent Street, we were moved to already in the past year, one by the bank and one close to this house.
Motion to approve the in body tree service contract.
So moved.
No support? Any other questions for Dan? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
And Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Chief? Fire Department.
Good evening, everybody. About a year and a half or so ago, we had some complaints that came in about some businesses that were having open fires. Mike and I sat down to take a look at the ordinance and realized that they were, they were within the right to do so based off of the current ordinance and also realized that the current ordinance needs some serious revision. First section of the, to the ordinance, ten twenty-one, ten twenty-two, ten twenty-three, and ten twenty-four, all have to do with the general job descriptions of fire chief, assistant chief, compensation for the members and use of fire apparatus, which is all actually under the fire ordinance district now and not necessarily the city. So having that even in this ordinance is probably not even needed. Article three talks about open burning. The state looks at burning in two separate fashions. They look at open burning and recreational burning. Open burning would be you own a large piece of property up in township, you cut down a tree, you file up that brush and you get burned from it before that. Recreational burning would be our small fire pits, you let it throw out town, that sort of businesses, some of the residents, so on and so forth. The way that the current ordinance is written doesn't really give a lot of guidance as to what should and shouldn't, what can and can't. So I ended up looking at a handful of other municipalities ordinances and seeing what they're doing and I supplied Mike with a copy from Muskegon, from Muskegon Heights specifically. That was a pretty user friendly for the most part ordinance. It has a little more detailed information, talks about, you know, the use of dried wood and so on and so forth. And they also have a permit process to get these. It's an annual permit. It does require someone from our office to do inspection on it to ensure that it's properly installed, that it's a proper type. If it's a standalone type, it's not just a burn barrel sitting in the backyard. It is within or outside of the twenty-foot safety distance from any structure and or combustible material, so on and so forth. Muskegon Heights does utilize a fee for those applications. Their fee is forty dollars. We do have a cost recovery ordinance here in our area, so if we wanted to forego that fee, we'd just put it in the cost recovery ordinance if someone was burning trash or something to that degree and we got called out or it had a fire out, we'd just use the cost recovery ordinance to pick that part in.
Or we could even, just for a permit fee, we could, we talked about thirty dollars.
Right.
I like the cost recovery ordinance a lot. We were part of a summit together on fire burning and I'd rather see us utilize that than charge residents to have gatherings in their backyard and cook marshmallows.
I guess I see it as, if you say if you're gonna, if you're gonna charge somebody thirty dollars, I think people are just gonna have their fires anyway. I know plenty of people, so I'd rather it be a free service to come out. It can be a safe thing. You guys know what's going on, what the backyards look like, have some sort of documentation if you have the bonfire pits. I mean, I just feel like that's a better way to know what's out there. I think people are gonna try to avoid a fee at any cost.
How would that work, Shannon? With the fire pit down here at Oaklawn on Grand River? We've got a, we've got a pit there.
So, I didn't, you know, I don't know if Mike sent out the copy of the application.
Yeah.
So in the application, it does talk about fire pits on public property requiring not only our approval, but DPW's approval as well. So obviously that one, being an existing location.
You have, or we did have, I don't know if you still do, but Stony Lakeside.
Correct.
Has one also.
Yep. So those ones would just be, you know, if we get called to it, it would be whoever is burning what they're not supposed to be, who we attach the cost recovery to. As for the permit for it, we could fill those out in the annual.
Please, right though, there's a ton of people that are gonna skirt, they're gonna risk it, rather than pay the fee.
There's plenty of people that I know who already have a bonfire pit and it is them in the backyards. I'd rather have the fire department be in those backyards, know it's set up, have some sort of documentation of what address has what kind of fire pit and do whatever you guys do. I think people are just gonna avoid that fee.
Would that be something then if approved? You guys are going in the spring or has new people come along and just say, hey, this is what I'm thinking, this is what we wanna do, you guys go check it out? Yep, it is, or no, this is what we'd like to see?
So yes to all. The permits are an annual permit. They go from May to following April. If somebody new moved in, we would still do it in June or July, but you know, the regular residents could go on to our website. We currently do burn permits for open burning for the townships through our website, so we have a copy of the ordinance attached to the website. They would log into there, there's a Google form that they fill out, which would be the application. They also acknowledge that they have registered the ordinance. And then when they hit submit, it actually comes through to our station, right on our screens, we keep it running, all of them. So that would be how we notify of someone requesting a recreational fire permit in the city.
So like I have, I have a burner, it's all metal, it's got a top, I would need a permit for that?
On the annual, yes. Like I said, the options that we could, you know, look at and discuss is A, eliminating open burning or recreational burning altogether. B, try to put an ordinance together that still allows for it to happen, but gives, you know, some sort of a guideline of what they can burn, where they can burn. You know, we start talking about the twenty feet setbacks. The pit can't be any larger than a three foot by three foot. So there's places in the city that, you know, Key Vista, their setbacks aren't going to be that, so they can't burn there. Right now, there are people burning there that, you know, it's not a great idea to put under the way, the way the ordinance is currently set right now, there's an on-distance setup to where they can and can't.
So my question would be, because I'm probably ten feet. The solo stoves are, they're selling that with that feature that you can put them right on, right on your wood deck and use them. So again, I guess I have the issue with the whole twenty feet thing. When you're, when you're purchasing something that is meant to be used in that fashion, so, and I'm, that's, that's just my take.
What is that? That's that smokeless tube?
Smokeless, it's a, it's called solo stove.
Yep.
It's one manufacturer. I know Duraflane has another.
You can sit right on the asphalt, it doesn't hurt, it doesn't get hot.
And so therefore, I mean, I have it set up literally on my deck. Again, I put a, put a two foot by two foot cement down because I'm going, eh, I can't, but you literally can set those solo stoves right on, right on your wood deck and, and again, I guess if you have sparks or whatever, but. So I'm just saying that for me, with purchasing the solo stove that's meant to be used in that fashion, to all of a sudden have a twenty-foot restriction, I would be opposed to that in that case.
Does the, does your solo create little to no smoke?
They are, they are amazing.
Almost zero. You get a little at the beginning, once they're going, there is no smoke.
I might be the exception at the table here, but I'm not a fan of, like, tonight it's hot, but it's gonna get cool. I like to open my windows, blow some cool air in from the outside and when somebody on the block's burning the crap they just tore out of their garage and maybe some wood and, I don't know. I don't like breathing smoke. You're, I mean, where you live, you got the cemetery across the street from you and.
But we still get a, we still get a smoke over there, but what I found in our neighborhood, it's not an open burn, it's coming from people running their smokers. See, my neighborhood, across the street, well, not across the street, across the driveway, for me, they have a fire pit in the ground and he has bricks all around it. And every time he's out there, he's out there with a hose, it's not a huge deal. And then I have the, above the ground covered, which is what I thought the ordinance was, burn bucket or whatever it's called, and then the neighbors over on Amity have one of each, so I think people should be able to have bonfires, but I think there should be a way to make sure, number one, not only burn the wood, and number two, it's safe
Right, so there are, there are some, you know, outliers that pose ordinance that I gave to you guys at your draft ordinance that, that talks about if we're called because of the smoke uses, we're probably gonna push a fire on. And there also are some exceptions for some of the U L certified products. I'd still, I understand you might be able to set on wood. I just worry about somebody that they set it under wood.
You got an onion tray right there?
No. I mean, it's, it's on our deck, you know, with chairs around it and.
You burn old flooring and two by fours from eighteen seventy-four?
Just say no, Perry, say no.
A fireplace that they actually built and it's pretty high and high, you know, and I know they do a lot of cooking in there and their foods. And I also know it's within ten, twenty feet of the garage easily. So if they're grandfathered in, you'll have to look at that or you just.
And that's probably more of an outdoor oven than an outdoor fireplace or an outdoor.
It's like an outdoor smoker oven.
City attorney?
It sounds like there's a lot of different types and that you're gonna have to take those into account in the ordinance.
I think, I don't have.
Can you word it without a number? Like, could you say a reasonably safe distance or instead of saying twenty feet?
City attorney.
The problem, Dan, though, is that you've lost the objective nature of the ordinance and it becomes very subjective and that puts the burden on him to decide what's reasonable and that's easy to challenge, unfortunately, so.
Well.
Puts him in the spot. Yeah, I don't, I don't love that wording, just because if you go and you approve a fire pit and you're not there when they're burning at ten o'clock at night and something gets out of hand, finger points at you because you approved a bonfire wherever it was. I, I have a dug-in-the-ground little fire pit in my backyard. It was there when it was dead, just a little hole with racks all up in it. It's maybe ten feet from offense and maybe twelve feet from my deck. Am I happy to fill it in with some dirt or let my kids play in it and move it? Yep, but I'm a real follower and I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Jake Gannport, five twenty-seven Lafayette Street. I also think that you should consider the Boy Scout troop because they have a fire pit up at the Boy Scout cabin and there's troops that rent the cabin out from the Boy Scout troop and that's gonna be a huge hindrance to them being able to do any of their activities out there if this permit isn't placed or if the permit is too restrictive, especially like flag retirement.
That's not residential.
Well, and, and that's in the township anyhow, so actually according to the current ordinance.
We own it, but it's not the city.
It's in the township and according to the current ordinance, if it was in the city, it wouldn't be allowed because of public land. So the current ordinance currently reads that they're not allowed to have fires on public land.
Well, but also, they just who does flag retirement ceremonies, which, sure you know, nylon flags, it's not, so you might wanna consider, consider that as well.
So there is an exemption for ceremonial fires. Cooking fires are ceremonial, ceremonial fires are listed as an exemption here.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I don't have a problem with a permit per se, but I can see the backlash of they're gonna come and they're gonna tell me no, no matter what I have. That's the backlash that'll come from this. I don't think we need to charge a fee, we don't need to. I think the honest people will call your department and say, hey, I need to get my permit. It's no different than any other permit, right? I pitched without a license when I thought it was a free weekend. There's people doing home improvement projects that don't get permits and they just risk it. Nothing is foolproof, but it at least provides a layer of protection.
And we currently have permitting process, like I said, the township's for fires.
Would it go, the permit that would go along to with burn bans?
Well, correct, so if they went in and logged in for a permit, then it would, it would notify them to disband and place.
I thought you were trying to collect the permit fee to pay for your time.
That's what the cost. We discussed it, but we can also do it under cost recovery. Yeah.
Which means if I'm having an illegal fire.
It won't come put it out, you give a bill.
I give a bill.
Yeah, and the, the cost recovery schedule would ultimately cost more than thirty dollars for us to show up with a truck and two persons to open a fire on that.
So if somebody calls, you show up with a truck?
Well, how else are we gonna put a fire on? Yes, we, we have brush trucks that, we don't show up with a engine, but we have pickup trucks with.
You're gonna show up with a. Put a deterrent though. Six or eight trucks?
Right.
You show up with six or eight trucks, cue sign, it's going, that's put a deterrent.
Yeah, they won't do it again with cost recovery, I promise you that, but no, we have brush trucks that have water, pickup trucks with water tanks.
But you, I'm assuming you go make a deterrent, because you can have a ticked off neighbor that's gonna call for any reason, but you go and determine whether it needs to be put out or not?
Correct.
Or because that neighbor made a complaint, you're automatically gonna put it out?
No, we're gonna make a determination when we get there. It's the same in, like I said, in the townships where permits are issued. We get burn complaints based off from locations that have permits. We come out and find out that everything's completely fine and there's, you know, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, the smoke's not blowing into their house and on other hands, you know, we've, we've pulled up on places that were burning twelve dollar pounds, a little outside the scope of the permit. So those cases can be obviously put out.
I do have a question. If you were to show up, say a neighbor's annoyed and calls and you determine that the fire, maybe it is even twenty feet setback, it's in proper placement, would you be willing to give a permit onsite at that moment? Or are they automatically fired, put out, you don't have a permit?
Well, part of the point of doing the earlier permits would be do those safety inspections ahead of time.
Right.
It's very situation based.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not gonna say that we haven't issued permits onsite before, but people that said, I just didn't know we had, you know, we had one.
I think you're not.
They were, you know, calm, cool and responsive to us versus those that, you know, come out arms flailing and tell us we can't be there and so on and so forth. Yeah, so.
Generally speaking, it's not advisable to have ordinance if you retroactive.
Right.
I just, whether people know that they need the permit or not.
Do you need, do you need a permit right now?
Currently inside the city, currently in the city, you do not need it, no. But currently in the city, there's, there's also, you know, when you talk about the Stony Lakeside park pits, according to the current ordinance, they don't, they're not supposed to be parked in the ordinance, they're not supposed to be here. Our warming fires down here aren't supposed to be here because they're on public space.
So if, if somebody has a permit, you know they have the permit, somebody calls or complains, you're gonna go out there with a grass rig, make a determination if yep, you can, or no, you can't, after they went through the permitting process? Is it part of the permitting process to keep you from having to go to the park? I mean, burn bans on the township are for when people drive by and say this field is on fire and you say no, here you go, it's Johnny Timson.
Now, we, we still send one unit, whether it's myself or, you know, one of the brush trucks to check and confirm, but it's, I mean, a good majority of the fires that we get in the city that end up being, you know, these backyard fires are called as unknown smoke in the area or, you know, smoke coming from the area. It's pretty rare that we get an exact address of this, you know, coming from the place that was hit. It's in the area of, so we're still gonna send a truck out to check to make sure that it's, you know, and again, we're still gonna send it out there to make sure that they're burning what they're supposed to be burning, that wire and rubber and trash and.
Flooring materials.
Flooring materials and anything else.
I had a request today about paper. Paper would be considered waste, correct?
Paper is considered waste by the state, yes, correct. We had that in the township. Paper is considered waste by the state. Yes, correct. Yeah, we got that in the township.
Well, paper flows.
It's incredibly dangerous.
And I'm speaking as someone who once started a fire in the backyard of a house I was living in up north by making a stupid decision when to burn. And it was paper that floated away and started the grass and cost me a hundred and seventy-five bucks and scared the crap out of me.
Cost you to change your name and move the wall.
Well, I don't wanna see anybody get charged to cook hot dogs with their kids in the backyard of them.
I don't think that was the intent of the.
No, I know, but a single permit fee at all is a deterrent. Lee is right. People are gonna risk it and hope they don't get caught. People do every day.
People do what they want to do. But like, let's say all of us go ahead, we get our permit, we follow the rules, we spread the information, look how easy it is. This is what they do. They come free of charge. There's no charge to you. There's no charge to you. There's no charge to you. Look how easy it is. And then people do it. And, you know, if I spread the word or if you have a new neighbor, you tell them.
And it makes it easier to enforce the cost recovery on most people.
Correct.
And it's so easy to spread the truth. I mean, we've had no pushback about the road tax dollars building the showboat at all. Once we explained it, everyone grasped a simple concept and the issue was dropped. In my memory, I couldn't be wrong.
Our memories.
I, I do believe that we need to update this. Yes. I think we all agree on that part. And I think we come back with, with another revise and then we look at it, we go through till we do, we got it right. And we'll keep moving on and we'll get it almost perfect.
We don't mean to beat you up, but it's questionable. So maybe you can take what was said and save the ordinance. Cause you do agree down with the department. So I do wanna see us be a safer community.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Renaissance Zone Mike. It's part of the possible development at I-96 in Old Nash. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation has reached out to the city of Lowell and Lowell Charter Township on if we would support the concept of a Renaissance Zone for the proposed development. This project has been submitted as a potential property for an M E D C attraction project R and P. The application to M E D C mentions the potential of two million dollars in new development along with two thousand jobs.
That says two billion.
Two billion. Two billion. Did I say million?
Yeah.
Okay, two billion. I'm sorry.
Oh.
The M E D C would like to consider the project to be deemed a Renaissance Zone under the Michigan Strategic Fund. Under the zone, no state taxes or local taxes would be collected at the project. However, while no local taxes would be captured, there could be a payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of what would be owed to the municipality for services. If the city were involved in this project, a four-twenty-five agreement would be, would be needed. However, both the city and township were asked if we would consider this. Just to kind of walk you through a little more detail about the Renaissance Zone, I can tell you, I, there's, Gaines Township has a Renaissance Zone right now for the switch project. And, um, switch.
Switch.
The old Steelcase building.
Oh, here.
Was there one thirty-six week L G M plan?
No, no, that's not, there's nothing there yet. And that's in Wyoming.
Yeah.
But in Gaines Township has one, so I did talk to their township manager and the way they're set up is that the switch is paying all of the township taxes, county taxes and the school taxes. So there's, it's an option.
So you can set it up with taxes?
Yes. They're paying the amount and the payment in lieu.
Because what's the point of a four-twenty-five if you're not collecting taxes?
Well, exactly.
Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so, and, and tonight, just to clarify, this is not an actual, I mean.
No, no, we're just discussing.
Because this is really premature for you to make any decisions. Because as you know, this has been discussed with the township, this whole concept for years. So, so this is the same development and there'd be several different layers of procedures to go through here. The first one presumably would be that four-twenty-five that we've talked about at length, which would essentially convert that piece of property into city property for all practical purposes, including taxes. And then sort of out of blue, Mike heard from M E D C, more specifically Michigan Strategic Fund, saying the applicant, so it must have been the developer, came to us and is looking to have a Renaissance Zone imposed on this area.
I don't, I don't think they asked for the Renaissance Zone. They asked for money from the state and that was what the idea that the state came up with.
Okay, so the, how it works is the applicant goes to them and says, what can you offer us? So the state starts thinking, maybe we can do a Renaissance Zone. And there are various types of Renaissance Zones. Mike attached a few handouts relating to some of the different kinds. This would be a geographic run zone. And essentially the state just gets to designate a geographic area in which taxes won't be paid. And it's incentive as part of a package to get a developer or even can be residential under certain circumstances to locate in certain areas.
So the state's contribution is for us to give.
The, no, the hand, the hand, here's how, so here's how it works. So you've gotta go through a statute whenever you're gonna forego taxes. And so the run zone is set up in such a way that people within a run zone don't pay several different layers of taxes out of the gate. So Michigan Personal Income Tax, the six mil state education tax, local personal property tax, local real property, local income if it applies, and then Detroit Utility Users Tax. But obviously that's not gonna be, local governments who have to consent to this for it to occur aren't gonna always be on board with that idea, right? They're gonna want at least to be made whole themselves. So how it works is under this specific portion of the statute, they would create a geographic Renaissance Zone, but then they would allow them to enter to a pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, which is just a contract with you saying, okay, we're gonna get the benefit of not paying all these other taxes, but we are gonna make you whole city. We're gonna pay you your taxes. And it's done often. So you'd be made whole essentially.
Who would pay us? The developer or the state?
The developer.
So the developer, let's say this in, in the four-twenty-five sign and that is the theory you're gonna go with. And in three years, developer goes, I'm done.
Someone still owes money on the taxes and you know how taxes work.
Yes.
If they don't do what they're supposed to do technically, there's a clawback that the, that the state can go back on them on.
Right. But enter, but you will not have given anything up. And to the extent that they owe you money pursuant to this pilot, it would become a lien on the property just like any other debt.
And it would sit there empty like it is now.
Well, that's true of any development, right, proposed. And at the end of the day, what you have is a lien on the property itself, which can actually exceed the amount of taxes. So you have the same safeguards in place as you would when anyone owes you taxes. The key here is that while they've given this Renaissance Zone break from other taxes, they would simultaneously turn around and enter an agreement to make you whole.
Is the Renaissance Zone in perpetuity or?
It's a maximum of twenty years.
There, well, and actually the statute doesn't specifically say what the limit is for this type of run zone. Other, other run zones do have limits. But I think the state and the Michigan Strategic Fund in particular can just customize the length and they've proposed twenty.
My understanding is twenty years.
So they're saying they would like to offer the applicant twenty. Again, they can't do it without your consent and it would be contingent upon several things following into place. Obviously the four-twenty-five because that's the only reason that you would have a say in it at all, otherwise it's township property. And then also the pilot, which would make you whole.
So I did talk to Jerry Hale about this. They did approach this with their township board, their last board meeting. And there's a mixture of opinion on it and legitimate concerns. One of the issues that came up from what Jerry told me was that if other businesses are taxed, these ones, you know, it's not fair for us to, to do, to do this when we make other business, which is a legitimate concern.
We do tax abating so.
Well, that's the other thing. It's just still, the state allows this tool, the state allows the tool. And that's, it's whether you, you know, it's whether you wanna use the tool or not.
This is just another flavor of a tax abatement, frankly. There are dozens.
Two billion dollar tax abatement or being made whole, but I don't understand why, like this.
The state is the one giving it up because they think that this development would be provide that much economic value to the region.
And rather than them giving M E D C money, they're just saying, don't pay us for twenty years. Right? That's it.
No sense, yeah.
I mean, very specifically, certain taxes.
What is the, what happens if it's not a direction I'm gonna take?
Well, if you don't consent, then the state cannot offer this incentive in order to induce the developer to make this investment. So that's, I guess the conversation ends there.
But with this particular development, there's other hangups, right?
Right. This case, this makes a lot of assumptions about what we'd be able to accomplish, which is why it would be premature to take any action tonight.
Right.
But assuming those other things came into play, again, the state would need your consent to even mention it in vague terms in the package. It's all, it would be very vague terms, you know, and it would be contingent upon four-twenty-five and the pilot. But they need your permission to even offer it as an incentive to the developer.
Do we still get to set the terms we discussed on the four-twenty-five?
Yes.
Nothing else changed.
Cause that was a pretty big sticking point. We were talking about water and sewer.
Perry, well, so you're just, the city would be, cause the city doesn't own the land or anything. You'd be providing water, sewer and light and power might be.
At this point in time, our understanding is the only thing that would be asked of is sewer, wastewater. Now, there might be with utility, I, I, I'm really not involved in that. I know there's been different discussions.
Right. So it's just, it's what you, what the city needs to recoup is the sewer. That's what they're.
But if the city were to extend services outside the city limits, we're gonna want a conditional land transfer incorporating that land into the city limits under a four-twenty-five agreement. Where we're letting our.
I honestly don't even remember the discussion with light and power. It was yes and no and yes and no.
It's, yeah, it's, I don't think, yeah, I think that's kind of something that's down the road if that happens. So I don't think there's any real specific details.
Is there any timeframe that this developer wants to start getting this, to think about this and push through?
So they're ready, they're moving forward. They're trying to move forward. The, when we got the, this was probably like three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, that we got the notice, they wanted an answer by five P M. that day.
An email payment for.
At four fifteen, I got the email.
Amen.
Yeah, and I'm like, well, I don't have, I know, I know Jerry doesn't have the authority to do that. I'm sure as heck know I don't have the authority to do that.
Jerry wasn't even in the state.
No, he was a miso. But, you know, but I mean, my response to them is, is that basically we're not for or against it, but it's something we would consider and basically, cause that's all we can really say.
Who came up with the two billion?
That was what was submitted to M E D C.
I was gonna say, so again, this goes back to the developer looking for incentives at the state level. So they have to fill out an application and meet a threshold of being able to establish what, what it is their development would offer.
Couldn't you build an awful lot for two billion dollars of that?
They called the M six core or when they build it to ten billion dollars. And that's, you look at what has developed out there over the last ten, fifteen years and it's probably getting close to ten billion dollars worth of things spent out there. The hospitals and the wires and everybody else. So I, I could honestly see where that could easily get to a billion dollars if not more development out there.
Cause a billion is a million million.
You gotta remember, everything's also thirty percent more expensive than you.
Right.
And it should just be part of the package that an M S F would offer on top of it. One piece of the package.
This is the, I really feel like this is ten steps ahead.
Right.
Like there's so much other stuff that we're still working on that property. We've literally gotten nowhere in the last year.
But the flip side of that is there's, there's no harm in us saying, okay, we're willing to look at it.
Absolutely.
But we're not obligated to do anything, right?
That's right.
If we say we'll look at it.
That's an.
It's more than a hole and we can figure out where ten steps we gotta take before we even break ground.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't even had a proposal yet. We're, we're, we can't do anything until they come to us with something. And, but we're, you know, we're, we're talking, we've been talking in concepts for months and years.
And it's just reached the, the state level and is, again, they're putting together the specific incentive package for this development and wanted your permission to refer to this as a possibility. It's really no more.
Yeah. And the fact that it says right here, it's all contingent on a four-twenty-five, makes it a possibility.
And frankly, the developer was honest about that. Cause when he went there, he said, you need to reach out to both the city and the township because we're talking about a four-twenty-five. And they knew that.
And it takes both parties to agree to do it?
Well, actually, if, if we had the four-twenty-five in place, it would just be the city that would have it. So, you know, you just kind of, they covered all the bases and just informed everybody.
But if there is no four-twenty-five on the township.
Then it would just be.
Yeah, but how, without sewer.
Well, I mean, put it this way, if, if they don't use our services, it wouldn't be a four-twenty-five.
No, but it's not our problem.
Right, exactly.
But I'm saying without some, without sewer out there, it ain't gonna be two billion. You're not gonna do anything out there without water and sewer.
Right.
Just seems to me we've spent an awful lot of time on this board discussing this thing. And every time we think we're getting close, no, we're gonna go over here now.
Well, and, and I guess in response to that, not that this is an, not defending the delay by any means, but the reason, we did have some good momentum after our last meeting and then the developer believed he might be able to get some ARPA money. And that's where this, right? And that's what this is. This is piece, this is a big piece of ARPA money that was given to the right place. And it took a long time for that money to be handed out. So part of it was the delay, knowing where the funds were gonna be going and how they were gonna be used. And I really truly think this package just came together. And that's why we're just now all of a sudden hearing them again. Cause it will significantly reduce their cost to go this route. Anyway. So no action required tonight, right?
No, I mean, it's more of a, it's more of a me going back to the state, saying, look, we're, we're interested. We, we look, we, we consider it. There's one of those lines more than anything else.
But it would come back to another meeting or formal approval.
Yeah, we wouldn't be approving it tonight.
I wanna get close to it as long as we're made whole.
Which that's something we.
And it's all contingent on the four-twenty-five, so.
Come back.
Let's build the tenth floor before we.
Yeah, so we're coming up on the third quarter. We probably won't hear anything until the first quarter of next year.
Absolutely.
Perry, anything else on that? How about boards and commissions?
Well, we got some money in the H D C, but apparently people don't know about it cause we canceled our last meeting because no one was asking us for money. So I've done nothing.
Jim.
Yeah?
Marty. Uh, I have nothing.
Clear. Same for me? My city managers report.
Couple items. The water restrictions in place. I would say over the last week, week and a half, we've seen some significantly, some significant.